Hello, everybody. Are we ready for another school year? Pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975, this meeting was noticed and sent to the Asbury Bar Press on August 13, 2025. duly advertised in the Asbury Bar Press issue of August 18, 2025. All municipal clerks of the townships, the boroughs within the official has been advertised and notified and requirements for this to be sent net on August 13, 2025. Please stand and join me in the question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and every justice.
Mr. Justina, any changes to the board agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that have been noted on the agenda that's preprinted prior to tonight, prior to going into executive session, the board also did discuss executive session. Exception number three, student discipline and attendance issues. Exception number eight, personnel items as noted on the agenda. And exception number seven, the board discussed tax levying incentive program and 2026 fiscal year budget issues.
Thank you. May I have a motion to take the Minister July 17 Board Meeting?
Offer.
Second.
Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion? Roll call.
Good evening. Ms. Reston?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno?
Yes.
Ms. Capiello?
Yes.
Ms. Butcher-Farkes?
Yes.
Ms. Sigmund?
Yes.
Mrs. Latimer?
Yes.
Ms. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just a note, communications are on file with the board secretary's office. We're now going to have the seat and have the board.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. A good evening. As we close out, we are, of course, looking ahead to this new school year and we are ready to open our doors to approximately 10,000 students. But I want to share with the community and with the board our final class statistics for the class of 2025. Our total number of graduates that we had in June was 2,560. The students who graduated through a substitute competency assessment in ELA or MAF were 37. Students who graduated through the portfolio appeal process were 44 students. And students who graduated through the alternate requirement specified in a student's IEP was 107. You know, we did have some students that didn't fulfill their graduation requirements. We had 13 students in the district. One of those students did not pass due to not passing an end of course assessment or the state assessment. But we had wonderful graduation programs and 2,560 graduates. These are data points that we pay very close attention to in our school district and ensuring that every student has a successful pathway post-graduation. But these were our final class statistics for the class of 2025. The past two days and tonight, we are welcoming in our freshmen to the Freehold Regional High School District. So our kickoff programs for our new ninth graders, we had three programs last evening and three programs tonight, where we are welcoming in our students as well as the parents to our schools and to our district. Today, we hosted new staff orientation, a full-day district program facilitated by the Human Resources Department, Dr. Sharp and her team, as well as all of the central office administrators, where our new staff have an opportunity to meet everyone, to engage with each other. They also go through specialized training today. And tomorrow, they will have orientation at the building level, both with their principals, the administrative teams, and the supervisors. So we are excited. We have over 50 new staff coming into the district, teachers and support staff, again, in a very large district, retirements and, you know, each year. So we are excited to welcome new staff and they bring us so much inspiration and are great contributors to our school community. So excited for all the new phases. We have two board reports this evening. We're going to hear from finance as well as curriculum. But before we do that, we have two other presentations. One is the SSDS report, Student Safety Data Sheets. What used to be the Violence and Vandalism Report is data points as it relates to student discipline and student matters. We're going to present that tonight. And also our district, we have a very close eye, which we've had over the past few years, especially coming out of COVID, on student attendance. So we are paying very close attention to students that are chronically absent from school. By definition, that means any student that exceeds absences greater than 10%, they're there 180 days, so exceeding 18 days out of school, are deemed chronically absent. So that is a percentage here in the district that we are looking to lower and prioritize kind of students being present and being here for all of their classes. There are a lot of factors that go into students' daily attendance at school. And we have many, many support programs through our guidance department if any students need assistance to ensure that we get them to school every day. That's where we want them. That's where we need them. So we are actively working with our administrative teams and all of our support staff to ensure that our students attend school on a regular basis. Mr. Mendez, our director, I know he's here trying to pull up his slides. I think he's ready, but is going to start with the SSDS. It's the Phase 2 report of last school year. So data points from January to the end of the school year of the 24-25 school year. And then he'll segue into our work with attendance and the plan that we are enacting to ensure we get some growth in our data points as it pertains to student attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Hazel. You know, as Dr. Hazel said, this is Phase 2. Every year, we have two phases. The first phase is September, December, that we present in the spring. And this is Phase 2 from January to June, any violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and substance abuse issues that we have in the school. I'd like to start just by saying that we have, as Dr. Hazel pointed out, approximately 10,000 students in the district. So these are incidents that have occurred across the district in all six buildings. Okay, so I'm going to give you the Phase 2 numbers and I'm going to give you the overall totals for the year and then I'll compare it to the year before. So here's the categories for Phase 2. Violence, we had 19 incidents, which brings our total to 33 in the district for the 24-25 school year. And last year, we had 41. So we're down a little bit there. Our vandalism, we had one reported incident this spring, which brings our total to two for the year. The year before, we had three. Our weapons possession, we had three incidents, which brings our total to five. We're up a little bit there. Last year, we only had one. And when you say weapons, it was, there was pocket knives. Those were the weapons. They weren't any firearms or anything like that. It was pocket knives. Substance abuse issues, we had 33 incidents in Phase 2, which brings us to 48 for the year. The year prior, we had 61. So we're down in that area. Harassment, intimidation, bullying confirmed cases, we had 34 for Phase 2, which brings our total for the year to 65. And the year before, we had 72. So we're trending down in that area as well. Our harassment, intimidation, and bullying alleged cases, we had 15 in Phase 2, which brings us to 25 for the year as compared to 50 the year before. So we're down significantly there. So simple assaults, there were six, which brings our total to 11. We're roughly the same. We had 10 the year before. Sexual contact, there were zero. Brings our total to zero for the year. We had three the year before. Sexual assault, we had zero. Just as in the year before, we had zero. Threats, we had 12 with the year before. I'm sorry, seven for this phase, 12 total and 11 in the prior year. Fights, we had six in this phase, bringing our total to 10 as compared to 17 the year before. So we're down, down in that area as well. Okay. Vandalism of weapons, this kind of breaks down that category a little bit. Damage to property, we had zero.
That's the question.
Sure.
On the slide before, there was simple assault and then there was a fight. So obviously, the fight, there's two kids going at it.
Right.
So like, what's simple assault? Like, if one goes up, punches another and the other one doesn't respond, so there's no fight?
Correct. Yep. Exactly. Okay, breaking down vandalism of weapons, vandalism, damage to property, we had zero, zero for the year. We had one the year before. False public alarm, we had zero in this phase, but we had one in Phase 1. So we had one for the year. We had zero last year. Steffs, we had one in this phase, which brings our total to one. We had two last year. Trespassing, we had zero. Zero total and zero last year. Weapons, possession of a weapon, we had three in this phase, which brings our total, like I said before, to five. And we had one the year before. Assault of a weapon, we had zero. Zero total, zero the year before.
Is that all knives?
Yes, they're all knives. Okay, substance use confirmed. This is when students thought to be under the influence and they're sent out for a screening and it comes back confirmed that they are under the influence. So we had 10 in Phase 2, which brings our total to 21 for the year. Last year, we had 31. Possession would be possession of a substance. We had 21 in this phase, which brings us to 27 for the year as compared to 38 last year. So we're down there as well. Sale, sale and distribution, we had two in this phase, which brings our total to two. And we had two last year as well. Students who refuse an exam, we had one in this phase, total of one for the year. And we have one last year as well. And then drug paraphernalia would be possession of drug paraphernalia. We had two for this phase, two total and one last year. So illegal substances that students were confirmed use of, all 10 of them were, we had 10 substance use confirms in Phase 2. All 10 of them were marijuana. We had no other substances in Phase 2, which brings our total for the year with marijuana uses to 21. Okay? And we had zero. Last year, we had 30, I'm sorry, 27 marijuana uses. We had one unauthorized prescription drugs. Last year, we had zero this year. We had one alcohol. Last year, we had zero this year. And the rest of the categories, we had zero all years. So harassment, intimidation, bullying cases for Phase 2, like I said earlier, where we had 34 confirmed and 15 alleged that were investigated and not confirmed for a total of 49 in Phase 2. So that brings our total to 65 confirmed, 25 alleged, 90 total investigations as compared to the year before, where we had 72 confirmed, 50 alleged, for a total of 122. So we're down 32 investigations this year. So that's a tribute to the staff in each building, the principals leading that, and the counseling departments. So. And then the last side is just all the different things that we have as resources to help with these incidents. And again, I just want to remind everybody, approximately 10,000 students in the district and the incidents, the numbers are very small. You know, we're talking about, you know, a couple incidents here with 10,000 kids. So it really, these numbers are very good and, you know, it's a tribute to everything that's going on in the buildings led by our principals and our assistant principals in the building. Okay. So I'm going to move on now to, unless anyone, does anyone have any questions on any of that data? Okay, great.
We don't like to see any numbers in any of these boxes. But we have been working with teenagers on a daily basis and a lot going on for our young adults. But we're really proud of the progress we're making as well as the educational programs, all of the supports that are in place and the strength of our counseling departments, our staffs and administrators. These are data points that we take very serious, seriously, and want to make sure that all of these support services are in place. But I am proud of our progress and there's still more work to be done.
It's really, these numbers are amazing. And I'm looking at some of the vice principals out here in the way. It's work you guys do. And staying motivated. And Liz, as a principal, and I was the CCA, these numbers used to be a lot worse. And, you know, it's a tribute to our programs and our counselors.
Absolutely.
They're amazing. I have friends that are like, you know, 50, 60 knives. I hear. Yep. And they, good job, guys. Good job out there.
Thank you.
They look retired.
Wait until next one.
All right. So the Attendance Action Plan. So the state, the state of New Jersey, and this is the legislation. You know, it says that if 10% or more of the students are chronically absent, that means that they miss, and I know Dr. Hazel kind of explained this already, but they miss 10% or more days of school. Okay? Without it being an excused absence. I'll get into that in a second. If 10% of the student body in individual school is chronically absent, the school has to put together an Attendance Action Plan. Okay? That's monitored by us, but that we have to submit to the county and the state. So just to get into chronic absenteeism. So up here is the list by code that the state excuses that do not count towards chronic absenteeism. So religious holiday, participation in Veterans Day, Board of Election activities, Take Our Children Work Day, that's one. Three college visits for grade 11 and 12 only. I know sometimes parents get confused in that and they take their ninth or 10th grader. Unfortunately, it's not excused as part of the state. If we were to ever close a school or close busing and they couldn't get to school. Or attendance, this is a new one as of last year, attendance at a civic event. If a student was able to provide documentation that they attended a civic event, it would be excused by the state. So those absences do not count toward chronic absenteeism. So this next slide is very important because the code states that even though the state only lists certain absences, they give every school district the ability to create policy that approves excused absences locally. Okay? So we obviously have that policy. But those absences, even though they're excused locally, they don't count toward like student conduct, truancy, course credit, and they wouldn't count towards that, what, you know, the attendant, the absences that are listed in our policy. However, the highlighted section is important. Even though we have a policy excusing those absences for students, they still count towards chronic absenteeism. So I'm going to give you a perfect example. A student could have knee surgery, knee total reconstruction, MCL, ACL. They're going to be out for a couple weeks. Now, eventually, they'll go on home instruction. But in the beginning, before we know any of that happens, they're going to be absent because they got hurt or sick. They got a doctor's note and they're out of school. Those absences, though locally, we're going to excuse them so they don't count toward losing credit or any kind of discipline or anything like that. As far as the state's concerned, they count toward chronic absenteeism. Okay? So that's important to note because, you know, some of our families get a little confused by that. You excuse this as an absentee, principal. Why is my student chronically absent? Because these are excused. They're only excused locally. They're not excused by the state. So that's really important to note when we're talking about these. So these numbers are from the 23-24 school year because those are the last official numbers by the state. State has not given us the official numbers for 24-25. So these are the numbers in each one of our buildings. They look a little high. 27.5 for Coltsnag, 24.4 for Freehold, 24%. And these are, again, are the percentage of students that are chronically absent. Okay? So it seems high. I will tell you that this year, by our estimates, and again, there are estimates the state has other factors that they count in. But this year, by our estimates, we are significantly lower. And significantly lower, I'll tell you, we're averaging about 25% from the 23-24 school year. This year, by our calculations and what we've submitted into the state database, it's called NJSMART, which is changing to NJSLID, but that's another presentation. We've submitted about 19%. Okay? So we're down. And our schools are doing a fantastic job really addressing attendance. And they're going to continue to do more. So when we put together our Attendance Action Plan, we were able to gather administrators from each school. And we were able to talk about each different school and each different community because every single one of them are different. The communities are different. The students are different. The schools are different. So we were able to get together as a group and look at our data and review some of the trends that were going on. We were able to get feedback from our students, from some of our parents and our staff about attendance and what we can do to better address our students, our student attendance. So some of the things that we came up with that are going to go into there that are in the Attendance Action Plan is the first one is parental communication. That's obvious. We've been doing that. We continue to do that. We're going to now do a mass communication two times a year. Principals put it in their opening day letter. They put a blurb in there about attendance and the importance of attending school and asking for the parents' help in getting their students to school. The other place that we put it, that we hadn't had it before, on the home screen of the parent portal, there's a place that you can put notes to parents. It's right under the login. So anytime a parent goes in now, the first thing they're going to see is a blurb about attendance and the importance of attending school and what chronic absenteeism is and, you know, and that we don't want it. Okay? So those are the two places. There's other communication that the schools will do. They have their class meetings with their kids at the beginning of the year. They actually kind of do it two times a year now. Where they go in at the beginning of the year and then halfway through the year, they do a kind of a reminder about some of the expectations of the school. They're going to do it there. They're talking with their teachers, all of their teachers, about talking to their students about the importance of attendance. So there's other places of communication. Each school will have a school-level team now. They've identified a school-level team that will review data on a consistent basis to look at the action plan to make sure that the interventions are working. And if they're not, what other things that we can do to maybe adjust that plan? The school-level teams will then report out to the representative that sits on the district-level team. And then as a district, we will get together a couple times throughout the year to evaluate how it's going for the district and help each other too. It's one of the things that I like when there's district committees. The schools can talk to each other. They can help each other with different ideas and different supports that maybe work in one building that they haven't tried in another building. And they can go ahead and try that with the support of the district. And then the schools will develop non-puritative ways to improve absenteeism, such as incentives for students. We didn't really outline exactly what they're going to be because, like I said before, every community is different. Every student body is different. So what works in Marlboro may not work in Freehold Township and vice versa. Okay? So they're going to work together to come up with those incentives. They're going to connect with families of adverse students to remove any barriers that they have, identify those barriers. What we do now is our, especially for incoming freshmen, our administrative teams, our counseling teams have articulation meetings with the sending districts so they can identify students who already have maybe some attendance issues in the K-8 district. And they can connect with those families early to try to remove some of the barriers that maybe the children or the families are facing in attending school. And create individualized Attendance Action Plans for those students that are at risk, that have high attendance issues, high absences. And then obviously coordinate with outside resources, Family Crisis, DCPNP, and other health professionals. You know, I work with some state officials on some other teams. I'm on the county and state threat assessment team. And we have on there some people from DCPNP and Family Crisis. And I've actually worked very close with the woman that runs Family Crisis. And toward the end of last year, she actually came to me and said, you know, we want to work with families that have attendance issues. So have your schools, please, reach out to Family Crisis when they have students that are really severe and they've tried multiple interventions and they really need help. So Family Crisis, this kind of happened toward the end of the spring last year when we made that connection with them. Actually, she made it with me. So we started using Family Crisis a lot more and they've been helpful with some families. So these are some of the resources that we'll coordinate with. And there's other resources. There's local counseling. I know I met a nice woman here today who, she has a local counseling office in Freehold. So we do have local counselors that have different offices around the district that we also will outsource to and ask for help. Okay? Some other interventions, privileges for students. You know, the schools thought that by making sure that not only do our students have to be well behaved, perform well in school to get, to have certain privileges, they also have to have attendance. So now, we're going to be looking at attendance to make sure that they're attending school. Okay? You know, for things such as parking, prom, even field trips. One of the things we talked about on our district team is why we've got to be careful not to let students who have missed so many days of school then leave and go on a field trip and miss more, miss more class. So we're going to be reviewing those things and making sure that the students fully understand this. They will be in that, in those communications by the administration. They will be informed of this. And they will understand that not only those are conduct in their grades tied to it, but now attendance ties to these things as well, which we really believe will help our attendance. This next one, we think, is going to help our attendance dramatically with our senior class. I will tell you, when you look at the numbers, the class that has the most chronically absent students are the seniors. Okay? And what we get a lot of is our senior exempt students from exams and our AP students, which that's anybody in AP, and our IB students. If they meet certain academic criteria, they become eligible to be exempt from their final exam, which means that they don't attend school the day of that final exam, which means it's an absence and it counts towards chronic absenteeism. So what we're saying now is students, not only do you need the academic criteria, but you also need the attendance criteria. So you cannot have more than 13 absences that count toward chronic absenteeism the last day of class before exams. The reason why we chose 13 is because there's four days of exams. If a senior's exempt from every exam, that's four absences. That gets them to 17. 18 is 10%. 17 is less. Okay? So we feel, and I know, you know, I don't want to speak for him, but I know Dr. Gleythley really enjoyed this one because his and senior attendance number Gleythley really enjoyed this one because his, his and senior attendance numbers are gonna go down significantly because of this. So throughout the year, the, the schools are gonna continue to communicate with parents and students regularly, they're gonna monitor student attendance both locally in the school and district-wide, we're gonna partner with families to address different attendance concerns based on the individual family and develop these interventions to support our students the best. All of these action plans will be reviewed constantly throughout the year and then yet again at the end of the year, and we will need to maintain an action plan until we fall below that ten percent level, which I know that our principals and our assistant principals are very hopeful that it'll be one, maybe two years at the most.
I have a question now.
Sure.
The state, like, a student has an IEP for chronic health issues, even if it's in his IEP that he can exceed, the state still counts that against him, correct?
The state does, yes, the state does. Yes.
Anything, anything in the student's IEP that's medical, they do count that?
Yeah.
If it's an absence.
If it's an absence.
If it's an absence, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so unfortunately they do, and, you know, the other thing the state counts, when I said we don't have the final numbers yet, I just told you what we submitted into NJ Smart, the database, the state also considers any of our students that are at out-of-district placements, they're out of another school, not at our schools, but we are responsible for them, their attendance gets factored into this. Okay, so, and they're not walking our hallways, they're out of another school, but we are responsible for them, so that is one thing that, that goes into this as well.
Mr. Mendez, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, when will we get the state's official numbers? I know you said, you said nineteen, when will we get their numbers?
So every year they do the performance reports, um, our performance report data, there's other data that goes into the performance reports, those are due in November. So we submit the final data, not this data, this data's already been submitted, but there's other things, there's narratives that we have to submit and some other things and, you know, technology ratios and things like that, that stuff is due in November, and then usually by January, they spit out the performance reports for the year, for the previous year.
Um, additionally, um, of course, the seniors being the highest percentage of chronically absentee, is that been pretty consistent over the years, or is there, has there been a surge, for instance, post-COVID, have we seen a surge post?
I mean, post-COVID.
Post-COVID.
Post-COVID is the surge, yes. Our attendance has, and, and that's not just us, across the state, has gone up, our, our, our absences, our chronic absenteeism post-COVID, and, you know, it's, it's hard because when we're going through COVID, it's like, well, don't come to school if you have a sniffle or a cough, right? Um, so parents are used to that, so to get them out of that, well, I'm not supposed to send them to school, and, and, you know, and they don't. Um, it's been difficult since, since COVID, so it's been up since COVID. And that's, that's been across the state, and probably across the country, actually, so. Any other questions?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mendez.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Taking attendance, you know, very seriously in the district, it was something that I communicated, um, to all of our families in my opening communication, um, to all of our parents, that was then followed up with communications from our building principals to our parents, and as Mr. Mendez said, at our opening class meetings, all of these expectations are gonna be outlined for the students. Um, the other piece that we are consistently working on is the cell phones, um, our priorities are on, you know, our curriculum and what goes on in our classrooms, and we wanna make sure that we are cellphone-free during instructional time. We did extremely well last school year, um, where our classrooms, our teachers did not have cell phones for our students, students did not have cell phones in the classrooms. This year, we are stretching that to instructional time, so if they leave the classroom to go to the guidance counselor or to go to the bathroom, they cannot have that phone out in the hallway. Um, so that is something that we are actively pursuing this school year, but again, um, we saw great gains in our GPA scores, we saw gains even anecdotally from our teachers on how they were doing on their local assessments, that teachers felt when those cell phones were away in the classrooms, that students were much more actively engaged in their lessons, and that's what we are about here in the Freehold Regional High School District, we are about our curriculum and about the education that goes on in each of our classrooms, and they cannot have any distractions. So, um, we're really proud of that work, and that work is going to continue this school year. Um, so I just wanted everybody to know, that is something that we are actively communicating and will be on top of, you know, all year. Um, our buildings are ready to open, um, on Tuesday, um, we are off for a long weekend on Friday and Monday, uh, for the Labor Day weekend, but, um, you know, our facilities, I went to visit, uh, three schools today and, and three schools yesterday, took a tour with, uh, Mr. Farrar, our VA, uh, Mr. Vedoni, um, our head of Buildings and Grounds, and our buildings look absolutely amazing, and I know we echo and say this every year, because they do outstanding work in keeping our buildings clean and well-maintained. This summer, we have really stretched, um, and, and having the budgetary funds, we are beginning to, uh, assess all of our buildings and our needs, um, and I just wanna go through for the community, some of the projects that we worked on this summer, and our district will be putting together a comprehensive facility assessment that will drive us for the next five to ten years, um, because we want to ensure that the, um, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, and the, the heart and soul of our buildings, um, are in great shape and that our buildings are safe and ready for all of our students, so, um, that plan is going to be actively worked on, um, in September and, uh, for months preceding. But for the community this year, and Mr. Vedoni is right in the back here, thank you to you and your team and, and to all of our building supervisors in the building, uh, our custodial workers, our maintenance workers, our grounds workers, were able to put all of this together, as well as get our buildings cleaned and ready for the opening. We had two boilers replaced at Freehold Township High School, we replaced the gym floor and the gym wall pads at Freehold Township High School, we refinished three gymnasium floors at Colts Neck, Freehold, and Howell High School, we refurbished the stage floor at Freehold and Freehold Township High School, there was upgraded flooring at Freehold, Freehold Township, and at Howell, we refurbished the auditorium and the stage, um, long due at Freehold High School, we, uh, put in a security vestibule at Freehold High School, last year we did Marlboro, we have paved the front, um, two parking lots in circle at Howell High School, paved the student parking lot at Manalapan High School, looks absolutely amazing, it was just lined and striped and numbered, um, as of yesterday and, and ready, and they're on it today. Uh, we replaced curbing and some sidewalks at Freehold Township and at Howell High School, replaced cafeteria equipment at Colts Neck, Howell, and Marlboro, we replaced the outdoor marquee at Freehold High School, um, hopefully, end of week, we'll have Colts Neck, um, but we have a marquee, um, waiting for us for Colts Neck. We're doing some upgraded landscaping at Manalapan High School, we're really proud, we're putting in a new STEM lab at Manalapan High School, an innovative space, uh, for both science and engineering, but as tech, uh, or also our technology students at Manalapan High School. They have a beautiful courtyard area that they use during unit lunch, students can actually use that as a passway in between classes, uh, but installed pavers and did upgrades to the courtyard at Manalapan High School. We restored interior doors at Manalapan High School, we replaced the roof above the high school main gymnasium at Marlboro High School, we replaced and installed a new baseball backstop at Freehold and Marlboro, uh, did some generator work at Colts Neck, Freehold, and Howell, and installed, um, any broken or any windows that didn't have screens on second and third floors in all of our buildings. Uh, so extensive projects above and beyond just the, the cleaning and the maintenance and the readiness for September, and at this point, we will be moving forward with a full comprehensive, um, our needs assessment from our architects, which will be a driver to the development of a long-range facility plan for the Freehold Regional High School District. So extremely proud of, um, our work this summer, and our buildings look absolutely amazing, and we are ready to greet our ten thousand students in these beautiful spaces. So thank you to the department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Higley, are you ready to do curriculum?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna do the curriculum report and finance tonight.
All right, the curriculum committee met today, and first of all, we went over the summer academy, we had two hundred students who participated and received original credit, we had thirty-five students for credit recovery, that's if they failed a course and they needed to regain credit, hundred and thirty-nine students participated in the AP Bridge Program, seventeen in the Algebra One Bridge, and seventeen students, which is a important thing with attendance, were able to get attendance recovery. If they missed, they were able to spend a week, three hours a day, and make up the hour so they could receive credit, so seventeen kids, so hopefully that will occur once kids find out they have to do that, that they'll be owing the coverage. Curriculum writing extensively, again, um, this year, IB is going to be rewritten for, um, history, both year one and year two, the magnet program, since the emphasis of a lot of the, um, curriculum writing for the school year, and basic math, geometry, Algebra One and Algebra Two. And then, um, also, curriculum writing is going to be taking place, which we've done most of the core courses, math's the other one, now they're doing a lot of the electives. So music, art, the multilingual program, and also the self-contained programs are going to have math, um, revised in their curriculum, so that's curriculum revision. Um, enhanced implementation workshops, every rewrite a curriculum, the next year, the teachers continue to be, as are actually teaching the new, um, curriculum, and then they make recommendations for the next year, so they kinda see what worked, what didn't work, and they tweak the new curriculums that they work on. So this year, that will be done for, um, art, science, technology, music, and the programs that were written last year. Um, SAT prep courses have been really successful, it's done all online, but we had in March, a hundred and ninety-eight kids, uh, participated in the program, it's a four-week, eight-class program, in May, a hundred and ten students, in June, a hundred and three, and in August, a hundred and seven, so it's been really successful, the kids really feel that this program really helps them prepare for the SAT, a lot cheaper than going to the out-of-district programs, and the kids have found it to be very successful. IB has again been very successful, we had twenty students graduate from Township and IB, and we had twenty-nine from Hallow. Uh, this year, there'll be thirty-seven students participating in, um, seniors in IB and Township, and twenty-two at Hallow. Again, usually IB says to expect twenty-five percent of students to receive the diploma, which they'll find out till July seventh, but this year, um, the class of twenty, twenty-five, forty-five percent of the students at, um, Farrell Township received the diploma, and at Hallow, sixty-nine percent received the diploma, so the IB programs have been very successful, and the kids really, it, the out-of-districts they get from the IB program, because it is such a rigorous program, is really outstanding, I mean, not just from the starting program, I think it's something that is really good in the district. Um, magnet programs, again, we have two hun, uh, five hundred and twenty-four students who will be, um, enrolled in our magnet programs compared to five hundred and nine last year, so it's nice to see that the magnet programs are very strong, every program seems to be very high, um, very, a large amount of students participating, and it's really nice to see those numbers going back up and taking advantage. And, um...
Mr. Bedd, one last.
And, um, yeah, we need to go over the assessments, we're gonna wait, the state's gonna change the assessments, although we barely have it going, but we're gonna wait till the next week to dive into that.
Sit tight on that one, yes, sorry. Um, but before we pass the, the mic, because I know we have finance committee report, um, also, uh, this summer, we ran our college application boot camp, we had a two-day program for our rising seniors, uh, to become appointed with the Common App, to be able to engage with their counselors about post-secondary planning, and, uh, most importantly, what I think the students get the most out of is they begin the framework for their college essay. Uh, so Dr. Hennecker and the, um, guidance supervisors and guidance counselors were overseeing that program, um, I was able to visit, I think I hit every classroom, uh, on one of the days, um, and introduce myself to the students and complimented them and thanked them for their participation. Each of those students really had a leg up in the process, um, so really, really proud of that program. Also, uh, Dr. Howland and the special education supervisors, uh, ran the, um, ESYE program for our special education students, they're a really successful program, um, they do some great activities, but that's really a program so that we don't have our students regressing in any of their studies, so there's an academic component, but then there's also a social component for them as well, um, so they had a great time this summer, it's a great way for us to get to know our new students, um, so that was exciting, and then we were also, um, facilitating our Title One programs, uh, this summer for any students that were in need of academic support as they enter into, uh, this new school year, and that's on top of all of our, uh, summer academy programs, as well as the Attendance Recovery Program. So we are very busy here in the summer, uh, but it is so great to see our students even actively thriving in the summer months and staying connected to the, to the school and to their program. So, um, just want to make sure that we highlighted those programs as well.
Okay, Mr. Mendez, are you all ready for finance? Are we ready?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. So back on August sixth, we had our, uh, finance committee meeting, and the entire meeting was devoted to facility prioritization, which, uh, Dr. Hazel had just, uh, touched upon, um, because remember, uh, this board voted to increase taxes by twenty million, so out of that twenty million annually, the administration, the board is looking to spend eleven to twelve million dollars annually on infrastructure, um, so what we did is at the meeting, and we basically heard about the projects that Dr. Hazel just referenced, uh, at each of the schools, what's transpired over the summer of twenty twenty-five, um, and also, we discussed the potential for air conditioning down the road, but it was all talked about from a top-down approach, you know, basically how much it could potentially cost, and then we, uh, had a deep dive on the heat and AC ventilation, what the difference was between, uh, ventilation and air conditioning, um, and going on, Dr. Hazel had just referenced the plan going forward, so what the administration told us at the meeting was they really gave us the process of how they are going to prioritize projects going forward. Because obviously, each of these buildings, being old, has a whole set of needs that we're not gonna be able to fund, so basically, the administration basically told us how they're eventually gonna score the projects that they bring to this board for approval, right? There's a ranking, it's something, most pressing or least pressing, so they're gonna look at, you know, projects that could be defined as, uh, life, safety, and regulatory, cost avoidance, uh, educational impact. So that's how they're really going to make their judgments on what should be prioritized, and the administration also went over how they're gonna work with industry professionals in order to make these informed decisions on what to bring the board to approve. Uh, so essentially, we just, you know, talked, well, it wasn't really us throwing out the ideas, uh, basically, the administration threw out ideas as some things that could potentially be looked at over the next five years, uh, you know, things like the wastewater tank refurbishment at Colts Neck, the aforementioned, uh, air conditioning, what's gonna transpire with our roofs that are out of warranty, uh, so these were all the things, but eventually, this board's gonna hear about, you know, this and vote to approve or not approve. Um, and then we just talked about the budget, you know, I talked about the higher taxes, you know, things that were added this year, like for instance, a nurse, more Chromebooks, uh, money's also being used to upgrade classrooms, um, and also, we heard about some of the new curb work that was done over the summer at Howell and Manalapan, uh, and then we ended it with a brief discussion about some, the paving issue with Marlboro High School and some things that have to be... And then we ended it with a brief discussion about some paving issue with Marlborough High School and some things that have to be fixed over there. And that was basically the extent of our meeting.
Thank you. I was at that, I remember that. Okay, so I don't have anybody here tonight that signed up for public participation. So, Mr. Farrar, are there any changes to the board agenda that you want me to make?
Yes, Mr. Brunon, so we do have an attachment, a handout that came back. G2, some changes to approval appointments. G5, one chance for approval of honoraria. G13, approval of substitutes and home instruction personnel. And then finally on G16, some, a couple additional retirements. And that concludes the changes for the tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to take Personnel Negotiations, G. H and I Programs Operations, Building, Transportation and Physical Plan. And J and K Educational Programs and Administration.
So just to clarify, that is going to be G1 to K2.
G1. G. K2. Move.
Sorry.
That was a record.
Any discussion board? Any discussion on those items? Not hearing any discussion, roll call.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Ms. Brunon.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello.
Yes, with everything except I am staying on G14 and I am staying in J4 for Mr. Roberman and Churn and J8 to Michael Capiello. Everything else is yes.
Thank you. Ms. Butcher-Parker.
Yes.
Mrs. Higley.
I guess everything except I am staying on G14 and on J4, I am staying to Mr. Roberman, Mr. Churn, Mr. Carey, Mr. Reckonaw and Mrs. Williams.
Thank you. Mrs. Laven.
Yes.
Ms. McCaff.
Yes.
Ms. Messinger.
Yes.
Mr. Brunon.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All motions carried.
Dr. Hazel, aboard, does anybody have any hold, does this feel like a discuss? I just wanted to do a quick thank you to the crowd, Township and Fongingale for putting our 5K last Wednesday night. They raised a lot of money in the pouring, the rain. But when I made the announcement to go to the starting line, I was saying, no one's coming. And they came from the bleachers, they came from their cars, it was like a blessing and it was unbelievable, let's see folks. Dr. Hazel came, Joan was there and it was the worst night and people praying to run and Mr. Heim was there holding up the finish line, batter.
And starter.
And it was just a great night and a lot of money raised for Crisis Center. And.
Great cause.
Yep, just like to thank how township and.
And the staff, many staff, many staff.
Have a lot of staff from this district coming to help, so you couldn't do without them. Crisis Center, learn yourself, so just great things.
Great work and great advocacy work.
Do you business here?
Yes, I'm going to do business now, I know you have some.
Yes, I have some new business.
Before that, are you able to start any new business? Any new business? No.
Okay, this evening, I am pleased to report we've concluded our interview process. And this evening, we are recommending to the Board of Education, a supervisor of special education, Ms. Michelle Feigenwinter. Hello, hello. She'll be joining the leadership team at Manalapan High School in the coming weeks. I know we have a little bit of time, we need to wait, but she comes to the Freehold Regional High School District, from the Montgomery School District. She was in education for 23 years, a special education teacher, an advisor, a team leader with professional development and a Title I building coordinator. She holds a New Jersey Department of Education certificate as a learning disabilities teacher consultant, so has that experience with the child study team. But, you know, first and foremost, I know you're going to be just so paramount with helping our students in the classroom. Your heart is in that classroom and that really came through in the interview process and that's most important to us in the area of special education in our schools. We had multiple rounds of interviews. We found Ms. Feigenwinter to be data-driven and goal-oriented. She brings to the position a significant depth and breadth of knowledge related to instruction, special education code, regulations and pedagogy and practice in the classroom. She has a strong focus on the importance of making meaningful connections with staff and with students and with our community. That being at the forefront to be able to do the most important work and that is to connect everybody to the learning in the classroom. I know you have Wilson experience as well, we're very passionate in the district about growing our students in reading. But just really a teacher at heart and I know you're ready to take that springboard into the leadership and the professional development of our staff. And I know you're going to be a tremendous asset to Manalapan High School, we have the Regional Learning Academy there. And also to all of the special education students at the school, but also a great complement to our full special education supervisory team here at the district. So welcome aboard to the Freehold Regional High School District and congratulations. Family here with you as well and welcome, welcome to Freehold Regional.
And before we close, I just want to thank the staff here, the summer is not summer, I think you know it. I don't think you guys are going to allow it out. So what they do in curriculum, what Dr. Shark does in human resources, to get a staff together. Can we come to late, start for you?
Mr. Farrar's been on his toes.
Yeah, and we're here to party because I don't know, Mrs. Smith, he would use the building in the summer. So and the job that Dr. Howard, Dr. Howl does, it's amazing because people really think nothing happens in the summer. There's so much, especially professional.
The team's been.
Bring on Friday all, so rest up and.
Give him a day off, Frank.
Yeah, a day off. Can I have a motion?
I made a motion to a juror.
Ms. McCaff.
And a junior?
Whoa, which is all favor?